All right. We would invite all who would like to stand and join in the recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, how would be thy name? Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It's now seven o'clock. Shall we sit at council meeting and call it over? Please join in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see this, please. Call please Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
I would now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal from June 1, 2020. So move. Thank you. We have a motion on Mr. Roberts and a second line motion, Martin, to dispense with the reading of the journal from June 1, 2020. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
The motion passes. Now come to the time for a public comment. Actually, this public comment would have arrived at City Hall or perhaps at the Tilted Building prior to 4:00 p.m. today. Is there any public comment to be shared or would it be shared during the reading of legislation? Anybody reserve time for that? Mr. Roberts.
I have a public comment from Mary Snipes at the, I think it's 50 South Street, South Street that heads toward the tubey. There's a tree up from her house and it has, she claims it's city property. Apparently, there are big things out there attributing it for. It fell on a car, really did a lot damage to the car. But she feels like it's falling on deaf ears. She thinks that more of it needs to cut down. She would like to have the whole thing removed because she thinks the address is right across from that little park that's, that is at the end of South Street. And there are kids there and they're riding bicycles past that tree all the time. So, you know, she wanted to come to a meeting and, you know, pound her fist. And I said, all right, now, you know, you're not going to be able to come to a council meeting, so I will be your voice there. So I just want to let, you know, I don't know if we can send something back out there to look at that again. I don't know. You know, to me, it's, I, it's one of those, I think it might be a silver maple, but it, you know, I know those things are off from the inside out. So sometimes it'll occur to my eyes from the, from the outside, but not so much. And we can really, really play hard to call those things. So I told her I'd bring up the public comment. What's your opinion, Mayor?
Thank you. And I'd like to really give kudos to Mr. Doug Hurst, our line department superintendent, and Ronnie Shepherd, our superintendent of Service Department. Within, I suppose, within three hours, Overlander was on site and removed all the dead wood that they found. They called like a, it's a safety prune type situation. And the shade tree commission will take up, I believe she has an application in hand and had probably to return that in. And they will take up the issue whether to have the tree removed or not. But it is in the tree line. I was on site. Mr. Hurst was on site. And so it is, it is as safe as it can be at this point. But we will look at it over and that has a huge decision being made by the Shade Tree Commission. But thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right. Eric Dunn, we'll move forward then to reports from standing special committees. Councilman Garland Gates, your upwind finance and personnel committee.
Great, Mayor. Thank you very much. The committee did meet this afternoon and flipped over the combined financial statement and other attachments, those I believe the finance director left at the table here for people. So if you and colleagues would grab their copy, we'll go through and look at some of the highlights. Five months out of the year is 42% of the year. So if you look very down at the, down at the very bottom, you can see about a third of the way over that 38% of the income, estimated income has been exceeded. And 33% of appropriate expenditures have been expended. So that's a, that's a real good quick inquiry to look at overall. But let's look at some particulars, beginning, of course, with the general fund. In the general fund cash, we had, as you can see there, $1,052,000, $53,000 since of the end of May. $204,000 of the encumbrances, leaving free and clear. $849,000. That is down $77,000 from last year at this time, looking, looking at the cash, not at the, with the encumbrances. But the year-to-date cash is up $123,000. So the general fund continues to be in a healthy state. Going down to some other funds that were highlighted, the street fund, $182,000. Of course, that's the, where gasoline tax ends up. We had expected, you know, much more gasoline tax, but people aren't driving, therefore, they're not buying gas, therefore, we're not getting gas tax. So how simple that works. But again, this is in a, is in good shape, up over last year at this time. Health fund, $390,000. The park fund, $165,000. The finance director noted that the park board has paid off its note that it took out for the Black Forest Commons restroom. So that's, that obligation is over. Going down to capital improvements, $240,000 there. Again, we've got plants, projects that have been somewhat on hold, mostly because of the time of year. But we're going to ramp up expenditures out of the capital improvement funds and give the tax pay or something for their, for their money. Streets, alleys, catch basins, $357,000, in good shape. Then we get down to the sewer fund, $272,000. Looking at the cash, that's $78,000 less than last year and, and $78,000 lesser than what we began the year with. Water, very similar situation, $196,000 of the fund. When you take out the encumbrances, only free and clear, $29,000. That is, that is precarious at best. And everyone knows that. That's, that's nothing new. The cash difference from last year, $41,000 down and $1,200 down from the beginning of the year. Electric fund likewise is down, but again, that's planned. We had taken steps to, to cut the balance and cut rates in various ways to, to our electric customers. Last one I want to highlight is the hospitalization fund, $521,000 in that fund. There was $397,000 at the beginning of the year. So we've brought in a lot of money that, into that fund at this point. We know that that fund can, can take sudden turns. We hope it doesn't because if it takes a sudden turn, we know that there are, there are claims and we have city employees or family members who are, who are ill. So we talked about it, a couple of things that we might be able to do. It's usually about in October when the administrator of our, of our self-funded plan comes to the city with an idea about what the rates will be for next year. Last year, we had heard that we were going to have a very large increase in, in our rates. And so what we did is we, we fronted money into the, into the hospitalization fund last year. And that helped keep the rates down. We heard, I think at one time, it was about 15%, something, you know, a big increase. Ended up being around four. So now, whether the actual numbers crushed that it was lesser or putting more money in did something, I don't know. But then there was another time, and I think this is right after the, the general fund was in very bad shape. And what we were able to do at one point, because the hospitalization fund was in good condition, we were able not to put contributions into that. That would be very good, particularly for the water fund and the sewer fund. They, they need every break that they can get. So it's, it's a matter of time to see what, what the administrators have to say, and then we can go, you know, from there. We'll continue, what, before we go, the, you'll see the fund, it's the fifth column that says, less, less encumbrances, the fund balance. Last month, there were a couple of funds in negative after the encumbrances were applied. As you look down through there, you see no, no negative figures at all. And I, I want to thank the finance department for taking care of that. That's, that's the better way to deal with things. We'll take a look at the next page. I have fewer highlights here. If you look at the general fund, the second grouping down, 2020, you can see that so far as of the end of May, revenues have been $2.1 million and expenditures have been 1.9. So we're, we're not touching, going into reserves at this point. Current income is, is covering current expenditures. Looking down at the 101 revenue, you can see 240, the income tax, transfers. We can see that it is down by $200,000. The finance director believes that's, is because of the extension of the tax deadline. And that, that once we get past July 15th, we'll, the hope surely is, since then that recovers. And, you know, hope springs eternal. We'll see, see what happens there. Down in the capital improvements, 300. Again, revenues are exceeding expenditures there. Finally, the last grouping is the income tax. You can see the individual income tax is down 38%. Business income tax is down 39%. Again, we believe that's because of the extension. And when you get to those, at July 15th deadline, we'll see a rebound there. The next page looks at comparison utilities. Again, the, the top group from 2020, and you can see that, again, expended from, in the wastewater fund, water, our expenditures exceed revenues by $78,000. In water, expenditures exceed revenues by $1,200. In the electric fund, we can see a difference there where expenditures exceed revenues by $545,000. Again, that is planned because of our efforts to reduce the, a very large balance in, in the general fund. We can look at the middle, the expenditures for all funds. Looking at wages, wages are only up by 1.4%. Hospitalization is up by 5%. Again, that was expected. Purchase power is down by 4.1%. And the administrative cost is a, is a slight difference there between, between 2020 and 2019. Last group, again, the transfers from the income tax fund, the 2020 income tax fund. You can see a negative difference in there comparing 2020 to 2019. Again, the tax extension, we believe is some, some reason for that. The next page is the cash investment reconciliation statement. The finance department continues to reach out to banks. We learned that they've had conversations with McCandless Bank and First Federal Bank. Those are two banks with which we do not have the depository agreements at this point. Also talked to Department National, which is the, the new name for Richland Bank. Talking about getting the quotes and the terms. But again, the concern is, you know, it's like any one of us can go and, and get a credit card at 0% interest for six months or a year or whatever. And then as soon as that, that teaser rate is over, you, you rebound to the old ways. So I appreciate the conversations that the finance department is having. I suggested the finance director contact these counterparts in some of the surrounding cities and see what they're doing. All these, most, a lot of these banks have branches there. They're doing business with them anyways. So it's always good to benefit from someone else's experience. We look down to the lower left-hand corner, we can see that the balance in the city treasury as of May, the end of May, $14,618,080.15. The next page, very short one, is the sort of Roush Fund. And the last page is the comparison of income tax collections. The top part is cumulative. We can see that as of the end of May, there was $1,651,000 collected in income tax. If you look across the other four columns, you can see that their numbers are pretty comparable with the exception of 2019, which was $1.9 million, you know, pushing $2 million down. So, you know, 1.7 million dollars, again, looking at the cross is, is not too bad. It was pointed out that the speed of processing income tax forms has, has sped up, has tricked up. That was very much a concern that Mr. Martin and I had two years ago in, in 2018. We know that there was some, some reason for that. The department was, the income tax was working shorthanded. But they are doing their best to get those forms open, processed, and checked depositing. The bottom is on the monthly figures. And again, if you look at the, look at May alone, where it was $255,000, and if you look across, you know, that's, that's bad compared to those others. So here's a case of a little bit of cumulative as opposed to a monthly figure. That was it for the finance half unless my colleague, Mr. Martin, has anything to offer. Mayor, we'll take a look at your report for personnel. You shared with us some information about the taxi, wondering about when that, that will get back into service. The vehicle you told us is out of the service department, having brakes and what have you taken care of. We do have the protocols from the high department of health for, for taxis. The situation right now is that we didn't, we have neither a driver nor a substitute driver. And so, Mayor, you shared that we would be advertising for those through the temp service by which we employ a driver and a substitute driver. All the other departments are back to full force. The lobbies at City Hall, the utility office are open. And you mentioned about having wonderful cooperation from the public for people who are trying to do different transact business there. So that, that is my report from finance and personnel. I'm glad to take any questions if any of my colleagues have any comments.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gates? Mark, yeah.
Mayor, I move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement both dated the 31st of May, 2020. You receive, placed on file, and posted to the city website.
Stand. We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second line, Mr. Martin, that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement both dated 5/31/2020. You receive, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gates.
Hi, Mayor. I have another piece of business.
Yes, sir.
Your colleagues happened to check their city email today. They would see that we have received a draft audit for the Shelby City Health Department for the year 2019. The health department is being audited separately from the city. And the reason for that is the state law considers health departments to be their own standalone unit of government. And so the auditor, for whatever reason, has, has chosen to audit it separately than from the city. At this point, we are, we cannot make those, those available to the public. State law covers that. When the audit is made public, it will be made public by the auditor of state. We do have an opportunity, and we discussed this briefly in the committee meeting. The finance director will look at the draft audit report and can make any comments or appendages to that as he sees fit. One thing that the council does need to do, and it's timely to do it tonight since the information came today, is to, we do have an opportunity to have a, an exit interview. It has been the practice of the city not to avail itself of that. So, Mayor, I will make a motion, there's two parts. I move that the city waive the exit conference for the 2019 audit of the health department. And the second part is to authorize Mr. McLaughlin to sign this letter on behalf of the city council.
Stand. We have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second line, Mr. Martin, that the city waive the exit conference and that the council also authorize Councilman McLaughlin to sign the letter on behalf of council. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Right at that time, the motion passes. Anything further on to the finance and personnel committee?
Mayor, that is my report.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Safety Committee, Councilman Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Safety Committee, mentioned June 10th. Fire news, Chief Thompson reported that we did not receive a fire marshal's grant, which would have been used to buy equipment. We did, however, receive 15 March radios, reused. They're, they're said to be end-of-life units. And once they break, you can't fix them, you can't get March for them. So they're just throwaways at this time. Give them to the volunteers to use until we can resupply the nivels. Chief's going to put in for a grant to receive a refund of money spent because of the COVID crisis and figured out about $6,000 we're trying to get at a refund. And then the last thing for, for fire, Shelby Fire, like to give an adoration to the family of former firefighter, Brooke Uplinger, who has recently passed away. Health Department news, cleanup days will be July 16th through the 18th. And there will be no pickup as in the past this year. You know, they won't be able to go indoor and outdoor, pick up lawn debris sticks and bush parts or whatever because they don't have a place to put them right now. So other than that, there'll be a list at some point saying, you know, what you can bring to the, to the offer here to drop off. It's going to be some appliances and stuff and some tires. But there will be a list out. But that actually is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And may I add, I put that flyers about that spring committee will be going out with this month's billing. And so there'll be details on that, again, the big changes. At this point, we have no way of finding a place for all that rush because there's a mountain, a mountain to that. So we're, we're going to put in a recommendation of our progress road. The Virgin County has a site there, so. But thank you for that. And looking forward to a good effort and cleaning up a little bit later than usual. But it's, it's in a kind of a shortened time period, but it's kind of a COVID-19 sort of thing. Are there any comments or questions from Mr. Roberts in regard to his report? All right. If not, thank you, Mr. Roberts. And we'll move forward to Councilman Martin with the utilities and streets committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Utilities streets will be met on June 11th at our normal time. The first of the businesses is that we had a guest in attendance. Mr. Lance Gutcher was in attendance regarding the city-owned alley adjacent to Weber's Bar. The alley is between Weber's Bar and Adams Albert Curry Insurance Agency. Physical address is between 4951 West Main. The city equipment does exist on that property. We have a lamp post, bicycle rack, cigarette depository. So we got a presentation on what that looks like. And basically, what they're, we're looking at doing is a, either a lease or an easement so that Weber's can utilize that alley and maintain that alley for outdoor dining. Something that Ashland has done with a couple of businesses there. And so we are looking at, are really researching the end up. At the same time, Jessica Griffin was also attending. At the same time, I asked her to look at the possibility of what an entertainment district would look like as well for downtown regarding open container laws and such. So more from that, I'm sure. We then discussed the ditch petition, but I'm going to save that for the interim report because Mr. McLaughlin's going to have a piece to, to brief us all on as that as well. Broadband survey. The broadband feasibility study has begun. Study is being conducted to determine if there is an interest in the Shelby community for municipal-owned high-speed internet service. Internet service that will provide city residents with internet via fiber to the end-user with symmetrical speeds up to, including a gigabit. The city has contracted Advantage Point Solutions to conduct the feasibility study. Survey schedule, basically this week, there's going to be a stakeholder survey. And I did ask that all city councils be included in that, so you should have received that survey. Stakeholder follow-up calls will be on Monday, the 22nd, and Tuesday, the 23rd. And in the week of the 22nd, we'll be scheduling a strategic planning workshop with city officials, but that will be the Zoom meeting. And I have also asked that the city council be involved in that. The week of June 22nd, we'll launch a residential survey. This will be included in the utility bills as well as, they're going to make it easier for us to share that survey with our constituents online. The end of July, we're going to close the residential survey by August 15th, complete the business plan, and last week of August, we'll do the final presentation. So we all look forward to that. And thank you if you have taken part in the stakeholder survey. Thank you for doing so. It was very helpful. Electric utility disconnects. As a recommendation of the PUCO, utility companies across Ohio temporarily suspended utility disconnects for non-payment due to economic downturn, state home orders, and health concerns. Shelby Utilities followed the PUCO recommendation for suspending disconnects. Though the utility disconnects were suspended, utility customers are still obligated to pay for their consumed utilities, electric, water, and sewer. As the community emerges from the state home order and businesses are reopening, residents are getting back to work, the administration is looking to reinstate disconnects for non-payment. The administration and council are very sensitive to ongoing COVID-19 financial circumstances within our community, but we are discussing the reinstatement. We currently have 285 customers that are passing due on their utilities for a total dollar amount of $79,573 in 2019. dollar amount of $79,773.26. With financial responsibility, we need to make sure that delinquent accounts are kept current to keep electric, water, and sewer enterprise funds in a sound financial state for the community. The administration is looking to reinstate utility disconnects on July 8th. And member communities have been discussing the entertaining reinstatement disconnects for the last couple of weeks. Some members have already implemented their time schedule, and there were some on June 23rd, some on July 1st, et cetera. So, per our goal, Richland Source, Fireline Electric Cooperative is scheduled to resume their disconnects on July 13th. So, we do ask any Shelby utility customer that's fallen on financial hardship, please call the utilities office for guidance and possible available charitable funds to help assist with utility bill. Please note, water utility will not be shut off for delinquency at this time. We will address water shut offs upon state emergency being lifted by the governor of Ohio. So, July 8th, those will resume, that's the plan. Water production cost adjuster, the water PCA. Now, the cost adjuster is used to collect revenue to recover the cost for certain operational expenses at the water treatment plant that fluctuate significantly. These include chemicals, sledge removal, electric, lab supplies, and testing. In review of the PCA collection process, it was noted that the PCA charge is omitted from the first tier of the water rate schedule. Approximately 1,200 water customers every month are not charged with PCA. These customers only use minimum consumption. So, basically, it's residential, commercial, up to 200 cubic feet, and then industrial to 500. All customers do not pay towards the PCA in the first tier of their respective billing schedule. And what that means in real term is that about $50,000, I think. Lack of collecting the PCA in the first tier of the rate schedule is taking its toll in recovery of designated water operational expenses. So, as of June 6th, financials, water fund balance is $125,000. We talked about that. A reduction of the fund balance was anticipated due to the recent sledge removal, it costs us $47,400. Because PCA is not metered out across that, we're not going to be able to get back that full $47,000 to the fund. The fund will flow back up in the next couple of weeks, as most collections are coming during the first half of the month, let's project to be short of the beginning of the year cash reserve. So, our water cash reserve, beginning of year balances, in 2018, we had $412,000, 2019, $236,000, and at $221,97,000. So, it's obviously going in the wrong direction, as we've discussed here before. We would like our cash reserve mark to be two months of expenses for us. That is going to be approximately $300,000, and we are well short of that. So, what we're looking at proposing is a change in the projected PCA collections that everyone would pay towards PCA, because they are items that affect everyone equally, and we need to get hold of that cost. We're also looking at the PCA adjustment period currently, that's quarterly. We're looking at doing an annual adjustment that will be easier for businesses and residences to plan and forecast around. It also will stabilize our water rates, and so it'll be annual adjustment with a December true-up of PCA, and to make sure that we're not, don't have wild fluctuations in this way. If we do amend the water PCA adjustment period, which we're still looking at, it is the recommendation of the administration that the sewer PCA adjustment period be amended to the same schedule, which makes sense, to be on the same schedule. All right. And they presented us with the water rates and what the change would reflect. Essentially, you're looking at a dollar and three cents would be added to that first tier on top of that base rate. You know, so we're looking at that, and we can expect legislation to be coming forward. And that, we'll discuss that further as that comes down. All right, the ditch petition. Ditch petition for a portion of the Black Fork River is being discussed with the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District. Section of the Black Fork River is being sought for the petition, is from Mickey Road to Geisinger Road. On Thursday, May 21st, Hafner Shag, Councilman-at-Large Steve McLaughlin and Mr. Insman attended the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District meeting to discuss the city's interest in filing a petition that would help with the ongoing maintenance. They said it was pretty welcomed, of course, it's a legal process to secure funds to help with the construction, engineering, and future maintenance of ditch, but in this case, Black Fork. Keep the river free of log jams, felled trees, debris, et cetera. With the successful petition, the county, countye and countees involved, does look like it's going to be a multi-county filing. Richland, Crawford, Ashland counties are going to be included. We will benefit the landowners that contribute water to the river, benefiting landowners, sorry, that contribute water to the river will be assessed by the county for the maintenance of the river. Mayor, Councilman McLaughlin, and Mr. Insman had a meeting this afternoon with the Soil and Water District Director, District Boardroom Members, and the county engineer to discuss next steps to file the petition. And with that, I will pass it to my colleague, Mayor, Mr. McLaughlin, to fill us in on that meeting and our next steps in this project. Thank you.
Okay, so, the topic's ditch petition. If you're interested in seeing where this is discussed in Ohio Revised Code, it would be Ohio Revised Code 6133, where the Ohio Drainage Law's petition procedures are discussed. So, with that, again, it's for future maintenance of the Black Fork River to keep it free of log jams, felled trees, debris, et cetera. So, just a little bit of background on this. Shelby Landowner John Schrader hosted an informational meeting back in February where Erica Thompson of the Richland Soil and County, Richland County Soil and Water Conservation District, went over the process of how this is laid out, a ditch petition, and she gave some examples of other counties that have gone through the process. And so, then, of course, the COVID situation hit, and so it wasn't until a few months later, May 21st, where myself and Mr. Insman went over to the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District meeting, and we expressed filing a ditch petition as a government entity for Shelby. With that, the second part of it was making sure that Richland County understood what we wanted to do. So, at this point, we have the soil and water folks that are on board, the county engineers, as well as the commissioners are on board, looking into this. Okay, the next part is the, we're going to have a public meeting. Put this on the calendars, 9th of July, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. You can either watch it via Zoom, or you can come in attendance to that over at the Longview Building over by the fairgrounds. So, plans to have the city council as part of that, as well as the 10 townships that are part of the Black Fork watershed as well. At this point, once again, I just want to stress that this is the very early stages at this point. There's a lot of, that we don't quite know, so hopefully by the meeting that we all may attend on 9th of July, we'll have a lot of questions answered to make things more clear. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have at this point. Was there any questions?
Any comments or questions for Mr. Martin or Mr. McLaughlin? Mr. Gates?
So, who is able to sign this petition? From what I understand, a, an individual can or a government entity? Would the city be signing on behalf of all property owners within the city?
I think when the government agency does that, it is, that would be the case, as I understand. There'll be another informational meeting. That informational meeting, I think, will yield a whole lot of better information for us. Phone conversation, I think it's been done a few times. I'd like to see what that looks like.
Are there, are there any existing ditch petitions within Richland County?
I don't recall any in Richland County, though.
Mr. Mayor, there are examples. Delaware County has had some ditch petitions, and I believe the Prophet County as well has some smaller ditch petitions, if I'm not mistaken. So, at that informational meeting, we could inquire more about how, you know, they went through their process and whatever else would they need to ask.
It appears some of these ditch petitions are as small as maybe a couple, three or four miles of a river, and some are as large as 20, 30 miles or more, which brings in more personal relationships. Yeah, I'm interested in seeing what that looks like within this trial, I believe. Any other comments or questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Martin and Mr. McLaughlin. We'll move forward then to reports from, our reports also to the officials. First of all, I've retained the motion to confirm that is on the agenda here this evening. Move to confirm the appointment of Dustin, I'm going to butcher this, Weisden, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Got a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts to confirm the appointment of Dustin Bousen to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Discussion. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I note the gentleman is already a member of the Planning Commission. My question, is there any action of the Planning Commission that can be appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I'll defer to Mr. Gates.
No, any action of the Board of Zoning Appeals can be appealed to city council. I can look that up real quick if you have it.
That's not the question I asked. The gentleman is already on the Planning Commission. My question is, is there any action of the Planning Commission that can be taken to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Mr. Gates? I don't believe there are, I mean.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, there would be, you know, consequence there, that's the concern I have, but my concern has been this way.
Mr. Robb?
Does the Planning Commission deal with any zoning issues?
Mr. Gates?
They do. The Board of Zoning Appeals, and I can pull up the, they're more of dealing with setback, someone requests variance on a setback, or if they feel grieved by a decision that I, as a zoning inspector, made, the Board of Zoning Appeals can meet on that. Planning Commission does, however, look at some of the parking of the zoning code and so forth, but we did have another member who did serve on both of these, who has since left both of those committees, but it has happened before.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Motion to confirm passes, Mr. McLaughlin. Let me report, the past couple of weeks have flown by, as I perform typical naval duties, such as department's superintendents meetings, community meeting, email responses, phone conversations, health board matters, and folks dropping by City Hall. Pleased to announce, as you have noticed, that our park, pool, playgrounds, and restrooms are now open. Of course, we are asking that visitors, please help us keep ODH protocol in place for everyone's health and well-being. Also, during my report, I feel compelled to say a word about recent verbal exchanges made in regard to the city of Shelby. On behalf of the loving and law-abiding citizens of Shelby, let me state unquickly that we collectively applaud and denounce hatred, racial bigotry, and racial discrimination. I do ask the question, is it really fair that a community be judged by a soil past, a social media post, or a quarrelsome person on the sidewalk? And I think not. Surely, there are ways to improve societal interactions, and we should be looking for ways to implement them. However, it has been my observation as a minister and a mayor that Shelby sincerely believe in liberty and justice for all. Shelby citizens are known for pulling together, not pulling apart. Shelby citizens are known for inspiration, not injury. Shelby citizens are known for churches and charity, not chiding. And I would like to close with the admonition from the pen of St. Paul, "Be not overcome of evil, but overcome evil with good." And that is my report. Are there any questions or comments for me? If not, we'll move forward then to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you. Mr. Gates covered pretty much the important stuff in my world very well with his report. So, my biggest thing is just to remind everyone that they have one month to either file their tax returns or request an extension until October 15th. They also need to pay their tax returns by July 15th, as well as the first two-quarter estimates, if they are estimate filers. So, they can do that in person, we do have tax staff there. We do still encourage people to mail in their returns. We can do everything just as well over the mail and say, do your trip to City Hall. That's all I really have for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? If there's nothing, we'll move forward to Mr. Eisler. Good to have Mr. Eisler back on board here this evening. Anything to report this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. Court's starting to get back to normal, I guess, for those who are interested. I was able to make my first appearance in here today, albeit with an acting judge. We're getting back to pre-trials and the like, handling day-to-day operations close to normal. My office is open, maintaining pretty close to regular hours now, too, no limited COVID hours. If anybody needs anything, feel free to stop in there, email or call or whatever, that we're staffed, and everything's pretty much back to normal in all places, so. On Mr. Crum's point, tax returns, we are still prosecuting those. I think I handled four or six of those this morning. Money's still rolling in, and things so seem to be getting people in gear to pay those criminal filings, so we'll continue doing those as well. Nothing other than that. So, we'll be back and see you all.
Thank you. And I do want to thank Mr. Eisler as well on the South Street incident with the tree land, that Mr. Eisler handled that in a very professional and timely manner, so thank you in that regard, too. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Eisler in regard to his report? We'll move forward then to Mr. Joe Geis, Project Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Our bid opening for the pavement project will be this Friday at 10:00. We're hoping to get a good number there. Salt, we, as remember, we applied for two different ways of getting salt. Let's just remember, the last year's was $101.34. We went for 1,200 tons out of ODOT. Uh, we, we went for twelve hundred tons out of ODOT, trying to, um, get a better price and so forth. They did open up their bids, and it's fifty-five dollars and ninety-six a ton. Remember Richland County, we went with a smaller, uh, bid, then thinking they would get as good a price, but we were wrong. They got thirty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. So, I did some quick calculations, if we buy all sixteen hundred tons, we'll spend eighty-three thousand sixty-eight dollars. Last year, we spent a hundred and sixty-two thousand, a hundred and forty-four, so basically half. So that's good news that way, but I would have thought the state bid would have been a better, but it's the way it goes. Um, also, hopefully later this week, you'll see, you remember the historic preservation, what you council apply for a grant for a sign to commemorate our historic district in downtown, that has, has arrived. It's going to be installed hopefully this week, so they're doing the underground locate, and that'll be next to the gazebo or bandstand and so forth, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Geis, you said we're buying a combination of state and county, kind of blending those quantities.
Correct.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis regarding his report? Thank you. Move forward to new business, is there any new business that we brought before council this evening? Here we go, move forward to unfinished business, the future use of Main Street Fire Station, we're still waiting word from Community EMS at this point, and not heard anything from them. The serious property maintenance, I did notice, as you mentioned, Mr. Gates, that it doesn't seem to have like a whole pile of rights, but there are a couple larger chunks. Uh, we have, I say we being, uh, Mr. Griven and myself have reached out to the present owner. Uh, we're still trying to find a way to get, uh, transactionary of that property be, uh, purchased, so we'll work on that as well, but, I guess we'll just continue to keep an eye on that, I think when those high winds and stuff come, I think it's, and then, of course, that is the, the thing we're concerned about, uh, vulnerabilities there, but, uh, so we'll keep a close eye on that.
Mayor, I, I'll just toss this out, you know, at what point do we, do we close off, you know, sidewalks are at the line there, at what point do we close off half the sidewalk, close to the building, to provide, you know, a lot of protection?
Right. We'll take a look, I, yeah, we don't want another Moody Thomas situation, where a brick come falling on cars, or we worship on someone, so. You, you raise a valid point, so, Mr. Geis, if you write that down, please. Try to take a closer inspection to the, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further unfinished business before we get to the Declaration of Independence? Mr. Martin.
Uh, in an event like that, where you have, um, projectiles falling off a building, we have to close it out. Is there a, is that the responsibility for payment of like the materials to close that off? Is that something we provide as a city, or is it the business owner of the, or the building, actually, the building owner, uh, have to, um, contribute?
I have, Mr. Gates.
I remember with the Moody Thomas, the particular concern was on the north side of the building. It was the city that, that put up barricades and closed off the sidewalk there. Yeah, obviously, I think the, the primary responsibility is with the property owner, you know, it's like, who's supposed to mow their properties? The owners, if the owners don't, then the city steps in. So, here's a situation where we have a building that is empty, the property owner lives out of state, I understand. If, if we are aware of a dangerous situation, and the property owner won't remedy it, then, you know, it's, you know, I think we have an obligation to the, uh, the, the public, to the, the public's safety to, uh, yeah, close off a portion of the sidewalk.
We just need to get it done, but we, we have NAPLIES comes to mind as well, we're blocking off from NAPLIES. Now, those are, those are the equipment, are, if by job, or if, you know.
Uh, my question was more, not, uh, should we do it, obviously we should.
Right.
Question was the cost, because obviously, you know, when we, uh, mow somebody's lawn, because they haven't done that, then we, do assessments, uh, to recoup the money. So I, I didn't know if we had something in place for that, obviously, I understand this was a, fortunately, a rare circumstance that we deal with, but, uh, I was just asking a question, largely unknown, but, uh.
Can you call tomorrow, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Any other, uh, unfinished business before we have the reading of the Declaration? Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mayor, the, uh, the calendar this year is somewhat odd, the, uh, the, the last fourth is, is three weeks yet away. Um, but it's been my custom for any number of years to read the Declaration of the council meeting just prior to, this is more than just prior to, it's three weeks before, but, uh, the calendar is what the calendar is. In Congress, July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, a declaration by the representatives of the United States of America in General Congress Assembly. When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth a separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitles them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind require the nation to declare the causes which impel them to the separation. Behold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the government. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them now seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. And accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing invariably the same object, evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of, so, excuse me, such has been the patient sufferance of, so, these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the present King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world. He has refused his assent to laws the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance unless suspended in their operation till his assent should be obtained. And when so suspended, he is utterly neglected to attend to them. He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people unless those people would relinquish the right of representation in legislature, a right inestimable to them and formidable to tyrants own them. He has called together legislative bodies at places unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from the depository of the public records for the sole purpose of teetering them into compliance with his measures. He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly for opposing the manly firmness his invasions on the rights of the people. He has refused for a long time, after such dissolutions, to cause others to be elected, whereby the legislative powers, incapable of annihilation, have returned to the people at large for their exercise, the state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasion from above and compulsions within. He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states, for that purpose obstructing the laws for naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations hither, and raising the conditions of new appropriations of lands. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and amount and payment of their salaries. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat up their substance. He has kept among us in times of peace standing armies without the consent of our legislatures. He has affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving assent to their acts of pretended legislation. For quartering large bodies of armed troops among us, for protecting them by a lock trial, for punishment, for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of these states. For cutting off our trade with all parts of the world, for imposing taxes on us without our consent, for deriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury, for transporting us beyond the seas to be tried for pretended offenses, for abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing there yet an arbitrary government and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies. For taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the forms of our governments. For suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. He has advocated government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us. He has plundered our seas, ravished our coasts, burnt our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, desolation, and tyranny, already begun in circumstances of cruelty and perfidy scarcely parallel in the most barbarous ages and totally unworthy the head of a civilized nation. He has constrained our fellow citizens, taken captive on the high seas, to bear arms against their country, to become the executioners of their friends and brethrens, reverend rather, or to fall themselves by their hands. He has excited domestic insurrections among us and has endeavored to bring on the inhabitants of our frontiers the merciless Indian savages whose known war, rule of warfare, is an undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions. In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Nor have we been wanting an attention to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us. We've reminded them of the circumstances of our immigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity, and we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations, which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence. They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and of consanguinity. We must therefore acquiesce to the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war, in peace, friends. We therefore the representatives of the United States of America in General Congress Assembly, appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do in the name and by the authority of the good people of these colonies, solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states, that they are dissolved from all allegiance to the British Crown, and that all political connection between them and the state of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved, and that as free and independent states, they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and do all acts and things which independent states may of right do. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred oath. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Well, move forward then to legislation.
Amended ordinance number fifteen, two thousand and twenty, amending section two hundred and seventy-six point zero three, investigation of complaints, correction, reports to council.
Move second reading?
Second.
I believe I have it correct here, that Mr. Martin made the motion, and Mr. Robb seconded, uh, for the second reading of amended ordinance number fifteen, two thousand and twenty. Discussion. Mr. Martin.
Uh, in the packets, uh, I want to receive the, uh, the, uh, reporting documents, uh, from the Health Department. I thank the administration for providing these, um, and, uh, also outlining, uh, in general, uh, the process, uh, that is, uh, being dictated to, to go through. Uh, the only thing I would, uh, draw my, uh, colleagues to look at, um, is that the, uh, the contact information and the information for the complainant, uh, is, uh, pretty buried within the, the reporting, and that kind of speaks to the, uh, uh, the reason that we have the legislation. Uh, we just want to make sure that it's at the forefront and we're keeping, uh, proper records. Uh, so, I appreciate the, uh, the efforts that are made, and, uh, it's, uh, nice to see that we're gonna, that, uh, making efforts to be in compliance, uh, with the ordinance, um, even prior to its passing, so, uh, thank you.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, at the last council meeting, uh, when this was here for a first reading, Mr. Martin had, had told us about a conversation he had had with the law director, and, uh, regarding whistle-wool protection. Uh, that was contained in the revised code. Um, I had asked Mr. Martin to provide me that information, and I have yet to receive that.
Mr. Martin.
That is, uh, completely my fault, Mayor, I did neglect to forward that email on, uh, so I will, uh, do that this evening. I apologized to Mr. Gates, I did tell him that I would send that to him, and it, uh, slipped, uh, my mind, so. My apologies, and I will rectify that.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
Well, so that I can, you know, have a, an informed vote on, on this for second reading, uh, I think it would be appropriate for, uh, for Mr. Martin to, uh, make the motion to postpone the second reading until the next regular meeting of City Council.
Mr. Martin.
I would, I think we have three readings, uh, for, um, for a reason. I have, I would completely be for postponing, but this was the third reason, uh, for that delay, but, uh, I don't think that there, that would be interest, uh, to do a second reading this evening, uh, but I will make sure that for the third reading, that everyone has the information on that.
For the sake of discussion, uh, for the next few moments, I'd like to hand my powers as the chair over to Mr. Councilor Dalton, and he'll become the chair for just a few moments, if I may. Um, explained, uh, last week a little bit, what is actually, uh, put in the pack, what was put in the packets. Uh, Ms. Conrad prepared that, did a great job, she was just kind, basically demonstrating, uh, how nuisances are, uh, like a typical nuisance complaint is, uh, received, compiled, it's actually placed on a, uh, a, what, you know, help, I think it's called Health Space, I don't remember, something of that nature. And, uh, so, so those, uh, those are filed that way, and she also gave some documentation of the, of the letters that are sent and the follow-up, and all, all the details. Uh, I think it's a clear demonstration that, uh, Ms. Conrad, uh, has kept impeccable notations on nuisance complaints and follow-ups and so forth, and, and, and those, uh, the names are given. I think some of the concern came with, uh, the Indian legislation, um, in the first, uh, sentence of the section one, the Health Commissioner and his or her designated order to investigate a complaint of nuisance, uh, shall record for public record the name of the complainant, then the complaint, and the outcome of the investigation. There are, and, and this is, I was kind of, kind of asking, and then, and then Councilor Martin can, uh, answer for me, but I was kind of wondering, in this piece of legislation... does this encompass every type of complaint or merely nuisance complaints? Would this encompass COVID-19-type complaints or any pandemic complaints, or is this only for nuisance complaints? That would be my question.
Mayor.
I think the section in particular doesn't specify nuisance complaint to otherwise complaint, so I would say that it would encompass both any complaints that would come to the Health Department in ways of either nuisance or whether they be—I guess we're calling them COVID-19 complaints, but those would be considered a nuisance complaint as well, in my opinion, just by virtue. If—we'd call them a COVID-19 complaint, I think we understand what we're talking about there, but if we have another pandemic in 2021, we can't put language that's specifically dealing with COVID-19 when we don't know if the next pandemic could hold, right? So I just took the existing section on these complaints and wanted to give more breadth to the vague section dealing with how complaints are processed.
Mr. Gates.
Oh, I just wanted to address that contained in some of the emails that Mr. Gates doesn't have was a discussion regarding that opening sentence, and when it was talked about earlier, taking the name. I had suggested adding language in the parenthesis about when provided. I think people have the absolute right to remain anonymous. I don't think anybody has an obligation to identify themselves when they call, and that was one of the issues that I saw in that legislation. And I think that can be simply just notated if in fact it's passed, anonymous, but I don't think we can require people to identify themselves when making a report. We deal with that and law enforcement issues on a day-to-day basis. Anonymous callers call regularly. There was one concern that I had with the piece of legislation as drafted for first reading.
And we are—and by we, I mean me—I'm researching a little further and looking at—it has been asked by the administration to include a possible amendment dealing with the name of the complainant when provided, adding that language. Looking at that further, looking at bringing that to the third reading, I just want to research a couple more things, make sure that there's not some more precise language that would be more fitting to these particular complaints than that sentence.
I think two things, and thank you for that consideration, because I have an agreement with the law director. It perhaps also the definition of nuisance, really, if truly pandemic complaints are synonymous with nuisance complaints or there's further language, and that's all up to you as legislators. And then just one more thing, Ms. Conrad did do some checking, and now she was—according to her email, she did surveys all across the state for health departments, and now I did not get to speak with her directly, but she did receive these responses about how departments take complaints, whether they're anonymous or not. She records that forty-six take anonymous complaints, eight take both depending on the complaints. So some were about nuisance or some related to licensed facilities, maybe questioning of maybe a restaurant or something like that. So forty-six take anonymous complaints, eight take both, and four do not take anonymous complaints across the state, so that was— but that was pretty good information. We could put that in the packets as well. But I—you know, just—I think something to think on again between these, this reading and the next, is a complaint of nuisance synonymous with a complaint of a pandemic or some business or someplace not following the protocols of the state. And also, I think in there, you seriously consider the name of the complainant if provided. We followed on that form pretty much the language of Richland Public Health. That's how Richland Public Health does it. That last little paragraph there, please provide your name and contact information. This information is not required, but will help us follow up if needed. But that is right off Richland Public Health's work. I pretty much—I'll pretty much work the work. So that's all I have.
Mayor, one question I would have for the administration is in dealing with, is how does this specific section, how does the Health Department view it in light of when they go out and do that, like specifically to a nuisance, but how do they interpret their investigations dealing with this section? And how do they define it? That would be helpful for us, because they're using the authority from this section to go out and do investigations for other things that are outside of what would be nuisance. That would be helpful. Like where do they get the statutory authority to do things other than just nuisance? Or maybe they consider all those other complaints nuisance? It would be helpful from my standpoint, how would they interpret it?
And I don't want to keep this thing going for a real long, but as Dr. Chala mentioned, this is a brand-new animal. When this hit, health departments had never dealt with something quite like this, and departments large and small across the state were scrambling to come up with ways, you know, how do you capture the data and what do you follow? I'm not going to say clearly, but I think that that authority came from through the emergency order down to individual health departments to carry out the orders of the Ohio Department of Health. That was then for us as individual health departments. That gave us that under the emergency orders, that authority, as I understand it, but it's an evolving sort of thing. We're hoping, we being the—Dr. Chala, Ms. Conrad, Tiffany, and also our consultant, to actually take this one pager and it'll wind up looking like the policy, the next policy you see for complaints and disease investigations. It'll look something like that, but this is—we need to get this together quickly because we did want to standardize all methods of gathering data, and our follow-ups have had that all documented. So Dr. Chala said this is for hospitals, for doctors' offices, for health departments. This was just something that people were—day by day, you were changing things, so admittedly, it's not a finished product yet.
Do we have any further discussion, Mr. Gates? Yes. Mr. Vice President, looking at the calendar here, our next council meeting is July 6. The next meeting of the Safety Committee is July 1. Obviously, this legislation needs some work, and I think we all agree to that. I would move that the ordinance be referred to the Safety Committee.
We have a motion to refer this to the Safety Committee.
Why don't I take the chair back at this point? I'll take the chair back at this point. We have a motion that this ordinance be referred to the Safety Committee. On what was the date of that, first?
July 1 is what it was scheduled.
July 1.
When you say in that.
I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin that amended orders number fifteen, two thousand twenty, be referred to the Safety Committee meeting on July 1. Discussion. Mr. Martin. About what? Mr. Gates made the motion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, the Safety Committee would be a venue which all parties could gather at one time and, you know, put our heads together and come up with something that is acceptable with the greatest number of people.
Mr. Martin.
I would disagree with the characterization that this legislation needs a significant amount of work that can't be done by council or by regular council session.
Further discussion? Then we will take a roll call vote on the motion that this be referred to the Safety Committee meeting on July 1. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Robb.
Nay.
Mr. Roberts.
Nay.
Mr. Gates.
Nay.
Mr. Martin.
Nay.
Motion to refer fails. Back to the original motion for the second reading of amended orders number fifteen, two thousand twenty. Any further discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I want to thank the law director for his comments a few minutes ago. It helps us to understand this situation. At least it helps this member to understand the situation. I want you to add it.
No problem. Any further discussion? We're taking a vote then on the second reading of amended orders number fifteen, two thousand twenty. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Nay.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Orders number fifteen, two thousand twenty, passing the second reading. We come to miscellaneous business. We have on the agenda a tribute to Marlene Harvey and Judge Tom Beeshafer.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to begin with a tribute to Lady Vern Upland. Mr. Upland was a firefighter with the Shelby Fire Department, spent until his retirement, so he came in at that time. He started and retired, so we know that he was with our fire department at least twenty-five years. Also during the early nineteen-eight, well, not so much really nineteen-eighties, but starting in nineteen eighty-two, he served on the Board of Park Commissions from the Second Ward, and I was—he asked for appointment. I appointed him. Counselor confirmed him, and he did a wonderful job as a member of the Board of Park Commission, so we hope at some point to hear about his services of his rankings. Second person I wish to pay tribute to is Marlene Harvey. Mrs. Harvey was an employee of the Shelby City School District, and more than simply an employee, she was treasurer after Howard Plauffer had retired as treasurer. You would look far and wide to find a person who is more pleasant than Marlene Harvey, certainly a wonderful individual and an outstanding fiscal officer. There was, at one time, an audit of the Shelby City School District, and it was a perfect audit. The auditors found obviously no findings for recovery. They found no citations, and they made no recommendations.
That says it all.
What more can one say? Is there a greater tribute that can be paid to a fiscal officer than to have an absolutely perfect audit? The last person to whom I wish to pay tribute is the great Judge John P. Schaefer. He served as the judge of Shelby Municipal Court after the retirement, the disability retirement of Judge Vince Phelan in nineteen eighty-six. The Judge Schaefer was appointed—all judicial vacancies are filled by the governor. He was appointed by then the Governor Dick Celeste to fill the vacancy and served thirty-one and a half years as judge on Main Street in the what then was the old council chambers, and then later on out on Technology Parkway before this edifice was built. During all those many years that he was judge, he was never challenged at the polls. And in the conversation with the judge, I learned that not a single decision made by him was appealed to the Fifth District Court of Appeals. So I suppose as just as perfect as Marlene Harvey's audit was, Judge Schaefer had a perfect judgeship in that not only did he not have any decision overturned, he didn't have any decision appealed. So I'm sure that you and everyone else here in council chambers extends their sympathies to the family of Mr. Upland, Mrs. Harvey, and Judge Schaefer.
Thank you. Thank you for the tributes. Very good. Any further miscellaneous business?
Mr. Ices.
Just to let you all know, I will be out of state July 10 through July 27. If you need me, please get ahold of me before then. I will have my cell phone. You can certainly try to call me. I will have my laptop. I will try to do some remote working, but it's not going to be a set schedule. It'll be very sporadic, and it'll also be determinative as to where I'm at and what mountain I'm in as far as what service I get, so just an FYI.
Thank you. Any further miscellaneous business? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, the council jury.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Council adjourns at eight twenty-six. Thank you, gentlemen.